All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Welcome to those of you who are here as invited guests and also to the public participating online. Marissa, will you please confirm that we are in compliance with open meetings laws?
We are.
Thank you, and will you please take the roll?
Commissioner Nardine?
Yes.
Commissioner Zer? Commissioner Vika?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements? Commissioner Harder? Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
All right, we do have a quorum. At this time, we will have our pledge of allegiance. Tonight's pledge leader is Raya from Montessori. Raya is a fifth grader at Chippewa Valley Montessori Charter School. She has always been interested in digging deeper into the topics we cover at school. Principal Hermanson says, "We have students for multiple years at Montessori, and I clearly remember last year Raya putting in lots of time and effort into all the work we did around the three branches of government and early American history. This year, she has continued to inspire her classmates with her creative and thorough approach to all her work, and even explored a set of governmental apps and shared her learning with her classmates. It's great to find a way to engage her in the real workings of our local government and history in a real-world setting." Raya, we're happy to have you join us. If you would please come up. Those of you who are willing and able, please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their government for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First, our business is the adoption of the agenda. I would hear a motion to adopt tonight's agenda. Moving second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Welcome, Commissioner Clements. Then we will move to our recognitions for the evening, and Superintendent Johnson.
Thank you. Tonight, we've got Putnam Heights' recognition and RTI success story. The leadership team at Putnam Heights Elementary sought to best use their resources to have the most impact on student learning. They decided to delve into the grade level standards with greater precision than they had before. Part of this unpacking process included aligning the standards across grade levels. Intentional collaboration by grade-level teams and across-grade levels resulted in positive outcomes for students over time, especially for students of color. Staff of Putnam have put equity at the forefront of their learning and recognize that there is still much work to be done, but they're very encouraged by their progress toward improvement. At this time, I'd like to introduce Principal Diana Lesneski and fifth-grade teacher Melissa Greer for the certificate. Thanks so much, Melissa. All right, thanks, Diana. Much appreciated.
All right, at this time, we'll move on to our public forum. The board provides members of the community four minutes apiece to speak to the board. The school board does not hear personal complaints of school personnel nor any person connected with the school system in a public forum. Tonight, our first speaker is Christine Knudsen.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can now, welcome.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry. Hello and good evening. My name is Christine Knudsen. I am new to the school district as my oldest son Drew, who is five, started 4K at Prairie Ridge in September. I am also new to quarantines and policies regarding COVID exposures, as this is also my first global pandemic. I got the phone call on Friday that Drew had been exposed for the third time since starting at Prairie Ridge and must now quarantine for 14 days regardless if he tests negative in day six or seven. When he's not at Prairie Ridge, he attends daycare. My daycare has a policy that if any sibling is quarantined, all children from the family must also quarantine. I have one-year-old twins, so you can imagine how difficult this is. In September, the superintendent sent out an email outlining the new quarantine options for schools that separated 4K students as having no other option than the 14-day quarantine. Now that five-year-olds, some of whom may be in 4K, are eligible for vaccinations, will new direction regarding quarantine options be forthcoming, and soon. In other words, if I get my five-year-old, who is in 4K, vaccinated, will he no longer be required to quarantine? Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public comments section for tonight. We'll move on to our reports. The first, as always, is budget development. Commissioner Lyons?
Budget development did meet on November 17th. The topic was a review and discussion of the next steps for the Eau Claire School District referendum. We then talked a great deal about obtaining community feedback. We talked about getting a facility review underway to be able to guide us in decision-making. And we also took a look at the timeline that the board approved at a meeting a couple months ago and recognized that that timeline will need to come back to the full board as we'll be making some changes to that. There is an additional budget development meeting on December 16th. And to start out the new year, beginning in January, we're going to be meeting twice a month in order to really start to flesh out the referendum planning. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to our legislative update. Dr. Johnson?
The U.S. Department of Education today announces it has approved the release of 95%, nearly $1.4 billion of Wisconsin ESER III funding allocation to school districts. ESER III funding was provided under the American Rescue Plan Act enacted by Congress in March 2021. However, its approval letter, the U.S. Department of Education disallowed the portion of Wisconsin's plan that allocated 5%, about $77 million of the funding, under conditions imposed by the Wisconsin Legislative Control Joint Finance Committee that rewarded districts that held predominantly in-person instruction. As a result, the U.S. Department of Education is holding back that 5% of the funding until Wisconsin changes the joint finance committee authorized provision to comply with requirements in the ARPA. On December 3rd, the governor signed Senate Bill 449 into law as 2021 Wisconsin Act 109. This new law allows critical incident mapping data to be submitted in lieu of school blueprints when school districts submit required school safety plan information to the Office of School Safety, and also provides up to $2 million funding to the Department of Justice in the 2021-23 biennium that must be used to award school grants to assist with submitting critical incident mapping data. This law was supported by the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. The governor vetoed Senate Bill 463. This bill would have required each school board to post on its internet homepage a lengthy and prescriptive list of the learning materials and educational activities used in pupil instruction in the school district, as well as any procedure or policy in effect that applies to the documentation, review, or approval of such learning materials or educational activities. Under the bill, any district resident could sue the district to force compliance and could be awarded up to $15,000 in attorney fees. The Wisconsin Association of School Board opposed provisions in this bill. On December 2nd, the governor announced a new round of $110 million in school funding. For $110 million, a new funding equates to $133.72 in per pupil aid across the state. Every school district in Wisconsin is in line to receive funds. Eau Claire Area School District allocation was $1,505,665. On November 22nd, the U.S. Department of Education published a frequently asked question document that provides information and answers questions about the allowable uses of elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund and governors' emergency education relief funds by state education agencies such as DPI and the local education agencies such as school districts for transportation. On November 18th, the U.S. Department of Education's Office for Civil Rights announced that it has submitted to the Federal Register of Public Comment a proposed civil rights data collection, information collection request package for the 2021-22 academic school year. Information collection request packages include key proposed data elements for the 2021 and 2022 academic year. The data include the addition of COVID-19 data elements to learn the extent to which schools are offering remote and/or in-person instruction to students during the school year, revisions to the restraint and seclusion definitions, the restoration and expansion of data about preschool students and teachers, including data elements regarding preschool students with disabilities who receive special education and related services, and those who are English learners, the extent to which schools have teachers with one or two years of experience and teacher certification status, addition of non-binary options to male-female data categories for those schools and districts that already collect that data to ensure that the office captures accurate and inclusive information about all student identities and student experiences where the data are available. On August 24, 2020, Assembly Speaker Robin Voss created a task force to focus on racial disparities, educational opportunities, public safety, and police policies and standards in Wisconsin. The task force formed two subcommittees. A subcommittee on law enforcement policies and standards, we've had 19 members, and a subcommittee on education and economic development, which had 13 members. On November 16th, the following summaries of the subcommittee recommendations and consistent items were outlined. First consensus: increase the number of teachers of color, improve early literacy for children of color, and then provide funding for full-day, four-year-old kindergarten. On November 16th, federal legislation known as IDEA Full Funding Act was reintroduced in Congress. The bill reflects an effort to finally ensure Congress thoroughly meets its longstanding commitment to fund special education services under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Special education is the largest single unfunded mandate based on Wisconsin schools and the continual underfunding of special education cost is troublesome problem for Wisconsin school boards.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to the superintendent's consent agenda. For both consent agendas tonight, the board acts with one vote without discussion. The board has either discussed each item at a previous meeting or has been provided background information prior to tonight. Tonight's superintendent consent agenda includes the following items: human resources, employment report, five-year capital projects, financial report, October 2021, gifts in the amount of $12,644.31 for the period of October 1st, 2021 through October 31st, 2021, payment of all bills in the amount of $8,310,762.42, and net payroll in the amount of $6,212,383.34 for the period of October 1st, 2021 through October 31st, 2021. I would hear a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda. Moving second, and Marissa, will you please conduct a roll call vote?
Commissioner Nardine?
Yes.
Commissioner Zer?
Yes.
Commissioner Vika?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the board's consent agenda. The board's consent agenda includes minutes of board meeting November 15th, 2021. I would hear a motion to approve the board's consent agenda. Moving second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Approved. Tonight's main portion of our meeting contains three different monitoring reports. We'll start off with OE 5, Student Learning Environment. This is the full monitoring report. I'll now turn it over to Superintendent Johnson.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Nardine, board members, student representatives, executive team, and distinguished guests. I think, you know, tonight with OE 5 and 6, those are monitoring reports, there's been an awful lot of work done with those. For OE 5 this evening, I'd like to just illustrate that was more of a team effort where our executive team and other directors had added specific items to this, evidence to it, and obviously agreed and discussed where were we compliant, where were we in compliance with exceptions, and where were we not compliant and must do better. For OE 6 this evening, that will be largely with K-Marks in B. And then for OE 11, the first draft of OE 11, that will be largely with Abby Johnson in B as well. So with OE 5, I will not go through each one of the subheadings with this policy, but just somewhat with general, I guess with a general summary of the compliance status for student learning environment. It was interesting in a couple of discussions I've had with board members is with OE 4, Student Success, of which we will, I think it's our next board meeting where we will go through that and share the evidence, there are some similarities with OE 4 and OE 5, and it's almost like we could flip those because OE 5 is more of the foundational components for student learning environment. Students feel safe. Do they feel that it's a very secure environment, a nondiscriminatory environment? And the OE 4, Student Success, where we will go into that in December, I think on December 20th, that's more of that student success taking it to the next level. When the foundation is set, then how do we achieve even more? But with OE 5, just real interesting for all of us to kind of work together on this, you know, the majority of our learning environment indicators were in compliance with exceptions. We do have a substantial number of policies that are under review. That's been headed up by Kim Kohler and others on her team. While we adhere to the past policies and related procedures, we're very aware that new policy and procedure work must be communicated, not just to the stakeholders, but especially to our administrators. When we set policy and work with our administrators on policy, they're the ones who have to implement those procedures. So if there are any changes, they're responsible for those. So I think that's very important for our communication network here. I also think in looking at some of the OEs here, we're proud of the compliance with the safety-related measures with our staff and students. However, as we prepare for the compliance towards certain indicators for staff verification processes, it does require some system concentration due to the size of our workforce. While we have the data, and this is the case where K-Marks was instrumental in pieces of this with OE 5, you know, there's an awful lot of data for 1,350 employees, approximately 100 new teachers this past year, to ensure that they all get the training. And sometimes, if you're an administrator like yours truly, you need a little bit more help and assistance from the HR department with those employee yearly verification processes. But it does require some of that system concentration. Also with this for our staff, which in tune, it does impact our student learning environment, our Employee Relationship Committee is really a valuable component to many indicators in this report, as well as to OE 6 Personnel Administration. That ERC is continuing to target items for review and ultimately the overall compliance. Furthermore, our student policies and measurement of climate and culture for our students must include more input from our most valuable stakeholders, the students themselves, where they possess the voice in the future. Throughout this document, there are certain processes regarding student information and human resources. They were in compliance with exceptions. While there are processes present, we just have not formalized them yet, and they will be formalized as described in the evidence sections, largely K-Marks and Michelle Radke for certain requests for student information. So that's why I wanted to introduce that. Either other members of the team or I can address any questions or concerns with the evidence or the overall compliance or non-compliance.
Comments or questions for Superintendent Johnson? Would just remind, we have both Commissioner Clements and Representative Schmitz attending virtually. If either of you would like to be recognized, please go ahead and just unmute your mic. I will see that and then call upon you in turn. Commissioner Zer?
So I think one of the areas that I probably asked like more questions than was necessary was related to Character Strong. And I just wanted to, first of all, commend the district for implementing such a sweeping social and emotional learning platform. And I guess the question that kind of still remains for me, and we've received a lot of wonderful information by email, but the question that still remains for me is sort of what we should be looking for a year from now when we see this again? What, when we look at that mental health component, what should we be looking to measure or quantify, or how will we know if that is having an impact on our students? How will we see that trajectory, or how will we monitor that?
Absolutely. Before I pass that off to Dr. Shong, just I really appreciate the work that you illustrated that our staff and our leadership teams have put character strong. It's a tremendous undertaking, I believe, two and a half years' worth of work in the midst of a pandemic. We knew that we needed to deliver a universal SEL resource for our students and across all grade levels, K-12. And I do know that there was an immense amount of work by not just administrators, but staff in every building where they had input into this, I think going over 33 different programs or products for this in order to meet 24 required competencies. We wanted to obviously start slower, but the pandemic hit, and that's what this team has decided. But I just wanted to give that little bit of an intro before Iing is able to share her knowledge of the last question that you had.
All right, thank you for the question. And yes, it's been a pretty significant undertaking for our staff, again in the midst of a pandemic, and also recognizing that our students probably need this type of support more than ever, even though we have been working, as Superintendent Johnson said, as a district-wide SEL committee, for really now the last three and a half years with regards looking at how will we be teaching the DPI competencies? And so it's a great question with regards to how will we know a year from now that we're in a different place? And I think there are a couple of different things that we're looking at. But I think it's important to also name that Character Strong is a universal program, which means it's for all children at all grade levels aligned kindergarten through 12th grade. So it's an expectation that our teachers teach it at the universal level so that all students receive these lessons regardless of whether that child is, you know, gifted and talented programming, they're an EL student, if they're in special education. Our communication and expectations have been that all students need access to being taught these lessons so that they can acquire some of these skills. The second piece is that when DPI came out with the social and emotional competencies, they called them competencies for a reason. They're not standards. And with standards, we measure students individually and then as groups to see how they are doing or progressing on a standard with the competencies. That's not the intent or the purpose for how we measure success. So I think a lot of the things that we'll be looking at will be things like poll surveys that we will be doing with our students. At the end of the year, even just look at one year's worth of implementation this year and then production to the lessons as to how those lessons have impacted them. The other piece that we also do is through our PBI's framework, we do what we call TFI walkthroughs at the end of the school year in which we have conversations with students, random students at the buildings that kind of look at how they've responded to the lessons as well as how it's impacted them. And then also through our DPI engagement surveys that we will be providing for our students. Ultimately, we hope that, you know, student engagement in school increases and then academic success is also noted at the end of that journey. But along the way, those are some of the pieces that we'll be looking at to see how we have been implementing Character Strong. The unique thing about Character Strong and Purposeful People is that they do use implementation science as a roadmap to teaching us as adults on how to work through the program and the different steps that we should be taking. So that's one of the pieces that we'll be working through with schools too, is where are they on their implementation journey? There is not a right spot to be at, but the expectation is that everybody moves along on that journey based on the resources and pieces that they have in place in their buildings to use in the program. And the expectation is that it's, you know, a universal piece that's introduced and taught this year for all of our students. So I don't know if that answers your question, but those are some of the pieces that we are looking at, rolling through and implementing this school year.
Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, I'd just like to ask a follow-up for that. I share some of Commissioner Zer's concerns about that quantifiable piece. And I, you know, just anecdotally, just considering my two children's experience with the variations of Character Strong, I guess for me, what I would like to see is potentially a step back from, in a year from now, to really examine the competencies of the teachers who are delivering this. Because I, I guess for me, my concern, as much as the curriculum itself calls for this universal approach that's based on the competencies of the professionals delivering it, and if you hear feedback, not only from my kids, but their friends, the experience going through Character Strong is greatly different. And for me, in terms of development, I'm not sure where Commissioner Zer was going, but for me, the consistency piece and the impact of Character Strong is predicated on those competencies of our teachers. And so I would like to see where are individuals in terms of their competency? Because I would gather, if the questions in the poll surveys, which I think are actually pretty good, especially if they are given, I think, more frequently than potentially less frequency, I'm pretty sure what will come out of some of those poll surveys is that the inconsistency in messaging of delivery of the Character Strong. You know, what I was disappointed in, so I have sixth graders whose teacher articulated the particular differences versus then an eighth grader where, depending on who's delivering, they don't even know why. And, you know, and/or the video that was actually for teacher training was shown to the particular student. And so for me, I'd say I'm all for Character Strong. I believe in its underlying principles. But what I would like to see in terms of a quantifiable, what is our measure of our teachers' competencies in delivering beyond the scheduling of when PDs take place, right? And so beyond PDs, are there other ways to demonstrate competencies and our feelings towards a delivery? Because the other piece, when you look at Character Strong, the individual's delivery in Character Strong, it's that belief that it will be impactful. And that's displayed to the students as they're teaching, right? Instead of just something going through the motions. So for me, that's a measure, and that could just be the only measure. I would be fine with that because I think long-term Character Strong, it's if an individual is receiving this learning experience by beginning kindergarten, by the 12th grade, you see the totality of that particular experience and our transitioning from elementary to middle schools. If individuals K through 5 had valuable Character Strong learning traits, one would assume then, at the middle schools and each of those environments, it would be a whole lot better conducive place as it relates to SEL. So those are, that was just one of the comments that I had about the Character Strong. Thank you.
Marissa, I wonder if you'd make a note for me. I think what Dr. Johnson has just said is something that maybe the board would like to see as an indicator, like training within Character Strong. And I think we just need to think a little bit about what the appropriate monitoring point, it might be this one for the future, but it also might tie into some of the other places where we have professional development indicators. So I think that's an important thing to bring back as an indicator. So if you just make a note, we just need to do some looking at the policies, see where will that fit in best? Maybe we can add that to our policy writing workshop as well. See your hand hovering there, Commissioner Zer?
I want us to have a chance.
You know the floor in the first place, just take it all and then, like, you know, do this one.
All right.
Go ahead.
Um, so the second thing that I I um, contacted Superintendent Johnson about prior to the meeting that um, and we had a great conversation about it today was related to five point uh, one kind of the overarching statement at the, I'm sorry, the overarching statement above five point one. So the uh, establish and maintain environments that are safe, health, uh, um, the the place, the conducive for learning. So the thing that I, the thing that I got hung up on was learning environment here. That small um, allusion to it. And what he's what uh, Superintendent Johnson said in his introduction and what um, Dr. Bika actually said when we were monitoring OE four related to diversity of learning environments. And just where are we going to monitor as a board? Um, our our innovative learning environments. Whether that is um, whether that is dual immersion or the Montessori charter or uh, the Arctic Zone or or the work of the LEED committee is where are we going to monitor um, learning environments that may be um, augmented to reach different populations of learners? And so I I uh, Dr. Bika had made the suggestion that perhaps it fell it fell here. And so I brought it up and Superintendent Johnson, maybe you could speak to it a little bit more about maybe that does fit better under OE four. Um, but perhaps the policy needs to be strengthened or re- reworded in some way so that we can make sure that that's part of monitoring. Um, because it seems to fit, it seems to fit here. Um, because it's it's about it's about learning environments. Um, but I really like Superintendent Johnson's um, interpretation of this policy versus OE four. So I don't know if you wanted to just, I just wanted to say that for the board, my observation of that for the board.
Well, I'll do my best, but I do remember with pretty good detail in the conversation we had as well. Uh, but the last time we discussed OE four, which was back in early November, I believe. Or it could have been October, actually, Dr. Bika, where you had mentioned that about specific, certain types of specialized learning environments. But the work that we do in the OE five and in the past work that we did in OE four in preparation for two weeks from now. It seems like with OE five, it's just more foundational. And then the OE four that we discussed maybe a month and a half to two months ago seems to be more, again, more specialized. And what I would, I guess, ask the board, I'm not sure exactly where it could fall, but I think it would it would result not so much in developing an indicator, but I think it might be the actual dropdown policy itself, whether it's an OE five one or OE five two or OE five three. That's something where it's almost like we'd need either at a board retreat or another, like a a policy review with the board. I'm just, I'm not sure because it's my first foray into this as well. But that after working quite a bit with OE four, but actually putting, you know, helping gather and organize the evidence for OE five, it just seems like OE four is more of the specialized and the OE five is more of the foundational. The non-discriminatory, um, safety, security. I guess though, that's what that's what came to mind for me.
I can say as the, as we went through and developed the operations, you know, we're looking at what other districts have done in their various places and the the place that the, you know, innovative programs and practices is is in four. It's actually called out in four seven, which I think you just mentioned. You know, and um, that certainly it specifically says carefully monitoring and evaluating the effectiveness of all such programs and practices. So I would expect to see an evaluation of how is Montessori doing? How is the um, dual immersion program? How's the Arctic Zone do? Like what are its enrollments? What are its outcomes? You know, are we seeing improvement? That's that's where I would seem to see, and I think the student success is literally that, the student's success. And that includes putting in different potential programs. I think, you know, maybe the the word environment there is like but it is, it it's about, you know, the what it uh, so I I think that I think it it fits just fine in in OE four seven. And you know, we're we are specifically saying encourage new and innovative programs. So not only, you know, what we already have, but one of the requirements we're currently asking the superintendent is, you know, let's continue to innovate, let's continue to expand, let's. Um, so I would I would say it goes to, you know, that four seven is where it naturally fits. Um, and and can be fully enmeshed in that right there. That's that's my viewpoint and that's kind of where we found it, I think, as we put things together.
Yeah. So it was just a follow-up, um, it was a follow-up to that conversation that we had about when it was brought up during OE four. Does it fit here instead of OE four? And I think the resounding answer was probably not. Um, but yeah, I just, I I want to make sure that, I mean, that my opinion, my my request would be that the board continues to hear about McKinley and Gateways. And we we continue to hear about these parts of our district that would get lost in the shuffle. And so I just wanted to make sure that we were doing that justice and that that came to us in the appropriate spot. So, thank you.
Doctor Johnson.
Yeah, so just for for a point of clarification, could could someone just uh, I I looked at this before and I guess I'm OE five one indicator, uh, indicator three? So the harassment and bullying reflects, is that harassment and bullying as it pertains to teacher-student relationships are among uh, amongst students? I guess I'm, I I just need a point of clarification because I'm not sure. Because then that would allow me to address the, I I guess my my follow-up question once I would know. Because I I would have thought that if this, because this is a student learning environment, that uh, uh, the handbook piece would in terms of harassment and bullying would be back, I think it's was it five three indicator, one of those indicators. But could could I guess for in the employee handbook, I was trying to find this online. I'm pretty bad at searching our 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 website. Uh, but is that is is that teacher-student? Is that student-student that that two point oh 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 seven or if someone could send me that link right quick?
Okay. So um, the employee handbook, um, the policy that relates to harassment and bullying. The actual board policy that relates to harassment and bullying for employees is in the five hundred section. And that that's the policy that's currently under revision. And that is a policy that's um, speaks to employees, how they relate to one another, how um, employees interact with vendors, how vendors interact with. It it's basically any adults that come in contact within the district. And um, specifically that policy, it kind of um, blends together. The, as you can see, the harassed bullying pieces, which is why it's um, currently under revision and we're working on that one. Um, the section of the handbook that says two point zero seven and that's
Well, thank you, Marissa. That's very kind of you, man.
Yeah, that's the same policy that I was just referencing, two point zero seven. It's the, it's the same, um, in the handbook, two point zero seven is the same policy um, as five eleven and five twelve in the are in the um, board policies, which is the same policy that's currently under review.
And so if, can I?
The floor is yours.
So in in that description, uh, uh, so that was, that's just the adult to adult interactions there. And I I I assure me in here, I uh, given the uh, the height, and I'm I'm pretty sure everyone saw, but they just released, the Government Accountability Office just released uh, that report on student experience with bullying, hate speech, hate crimes, victimization. Uh, and it's expanded exponentially. So if, is there going to be a piece and or is there a piece? And I remember what was the uh, we just received, so one of the DPI reports had a a couple of questions specifically as it relates to bullying. I I would like to see something that speaks to the the student, the student type of interaction in that particular environment. Or is that not uh, not the place or can we add add that to the item? Right? Because for me, when I think about a student's learning environment, it's the teacher-student interaction. But also it's the student-student interaction that takes place. And given the uh, given where we are in terms of uh, uh, the heightened awareness with bullying and 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 hate speech, especially uh, in recent news of students uh, uh, performing walkouts. Uh, uh, students going to uh, uh, to the media to talk about things that were were being done within their respective schools or school. Uh, I don't know, could or could this be replaced with the revision? Or that's, I guess that's what I'm curious to know.
So that's a good question. We do have um, policies and exhibits and rules on student discrimination as well as complaints for harassment and bullying. Um, as I had already mentioned, four eleven is also under review for our team as well. We had done most of the work and I think um, some of you on the board have been part of that conversation starting out. When Mandy and I first started working on revising four eleven, then in the fall, um, DPI shared additional modules with us with regards to bullying um, complaints and how controlling forms and how to make them more effective and then the response process back from the school. And so we had to take a little bit of a hiatus to update those forms. And again, just because of capacity and the pandemic, um, our ability to just keep up with that just has not been completed. And so there is a component for eleven that deals with student um, harassment and bullying that will be included as the rule and exhibits for policy four eleven when we get that updated.
So so then given that comment, could it just be possible then for that indicator three that in addition to the employee two oh seven? That uh, wants the revised four eleven is updated, that language specific to the students bullying piece that Dr. John just mentioned? That that just be added as as an additional kind of piece? So, thank you.
Exactly. For additional evidence and additional language in the indicator, correct? The next go around?
Yep, yep. So if if that could be, if if that could be added, as I as I'm looking through, it just kind of one of those things where you kind of miss pieces. And so because for me, I'm not sure that indicator would, that indicator would not do anything for me. Uh, the two point oh seven and redoing that language. Uh, yeah, just for just for in in my particular interpretation. So, but thank you.
Seeing no other comments or questions at this time, I would hear a motion to approve. Obviously, after the motion is on the table, if there are any places where the board disagrees with Superintendent Johnson's assessment of a particular indicator or um, that would be an appropriate time to, you know, amend if, just as a reminder, we haven't done that so far. I think as a a credit to your accurate assessment of the condition of the district Superintendent Johnson. But I just remind you as we go into this next part. So at this time, unless there are additional comments or questions, I would hear a motion to uh, accept and approve OE five.
Still moved?
Is there a second? Moved and seconded is their discussion on the motion. Seeing none, I will call the question to approve, accept and approve OE five. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. I will now move on to the full monitoring report for OE six. Once again, I'll turn it over to you Superintendent Johnson.
Thank you. Uh, with OE six, um, you know, for this reporting period, I I think the majority of the personnel administration indicators were in compliance with exceptions. As noted, uh, the most critical of these would have to be toward the the creation and maintenance of our own organizational culture and recruitment and induction processes of uh, for all positions. I specifically looked at and I I spoke with Kay quite a bit on this, two, six point one, six point two, six point eleven. Um, Ms. Poplin, don't worry about sliding through those right now. That's okay. Um, but we took quite a bit of time with six one, six two and six eleven. The reason being is the discussion we had the first time with the first draft and my interpretation, we seem to do real well with surveys. And then what we do with that survey information? Or we may have some focus groups, but then what next? Um, something that that may come out when we discuss a little bit more um, with these after I go over the, uh, I guess just the general summary. Um, Ms. Van Vliet and uh, Ms. Grant and I had had reached out and Jim Schmidt is very well aware of the the group EAB. It used to be called, I believe, the Education or Educational Advisory Board, Mr. Schmidt. Um, but now there's no act, they just, they refer to themselves as EAB. And it it's it's just, it's a research organization, plenty of data data analysis, looking all over the country. They've asked, you know, um, all sorts of surveys with, especially in this time of the pandemic with teacher morale in an all-time role. Let's face it, it's just happening in Eau Claire, it's not maybe just happening in Bloomer or Chippewa Falls, it's all over. And what they're trying to do or what types of things may work? And what are the things that we could do to impact? I think the the date of this was back in, I think, November it was due and I think in the next couple of weeks, we will be having another meeting with them to determine what, you know, what was the what was the feedback that they had gained and and those types of items. So that was largely with six one, six two and six eleven for organizational culture. Um, now in between that and afterward, I'll I'll bring up a little bit too. But our, again, our adherence to employee complaints, job description systems and protection of confidential information related to personnel matters, we do have compliance with that. Um, and obviously Executive Director Marks could talk about those processes a bit, obviously in very general terms. Um, while while we're compliant with the Wisconsin DPI district policy on highly qualified individual and on on the on highly qualified individuals and on evaluations, the processes have looked different due to the application and approval of that effectiveness waiver that we applied for and that we received last year. In overall DPI reporting, there are just so many things that DPI shares with us, but then there are some that there aren't. Um, as we prepare for that compliance towards certain indicators related to staff verification processes and updates to the employee handbook policies, it's going to, again, kind of like with OE five, require a little bit of time for us to glean that data from thirteen hundred and fifty to fourteen hundred employees. Um, again, the ERC is really valuable in this district and also to many indicators in the report. Um, it's it's valuable at meeting compliance and the board's expectations. I guess what I have to say for for uh, numbers six twelve through six fifteen, those are related to prohibiting my unilateral decision-making regarding adherence to the employee handbook, my own compensation and the compensation plans of other employees. I don't think you have to worry about that. They are all firmly in compliance. So I think that's from six twelve all the way to six fifteen. Um, and those are approved, obviously, in, you know, through board action, but as well as from our um, Executive Director of Human Resources. But again, we focused or or I did or we were kind of looking at uh, the use of EAB for six one, six two and six eleven. You know, the climate and culture of the organization and then one of the indicators, I believe, for six one, just naming it as morale. Um, and talking about the differences between the three. And then using not just, not just uh, uh, administrators going out into the, you know, for focus groups, but but actually hearing from students, from parents, um, from other stakeholders as well. So just a little bit different flavor, but also trying to get through best get from what we can learn from EAB and best practice, research-based and what they learned over the past, especially in the pandemic. Research based and what they learned over the past, especially in the pandemic that year. And I believe we've had a relationship with them, uh, Mr. Schmidt, for how long, three years? Especially with this item, I I had not utilized their services much last year, I had individually, but this year, um. Especially with that morale component, we do meet with the E A C leadership team, their executive board, the small group leadership structure. With meet and confer um, quite often. And I think that's a very healthy relationship, um, but I think bringing this to the table for them will help. Um, not just our staff, but but benefit our students too.
Lieutenant Alliance.
So I I've had some experience in working with E A B, they're excellent. Are they writing this survey specifically for us, or is this one of the? The kind of boilerplate template surveys that that they've done at other places? There's an opportunity sometimes to do benchmarking and find out. Um. If, where we are in in in. Um. It might be helpful. Um, I'm also wondering, um. About the confidentiality of having that survey information done by an outside entity and what happens with that data, because they also. Uh, do quite a bit of publishing of those reports. And even though the the names are are kind of struck, they're described as midwestern, you know, so. There I, there's a lot of questions there, but reviews, I am familiar with E A B, they're they're very good.
Ms. Van Vliet wants to add a little bit more from one of the meetings, our most recent meetings that we had with them. They did not, they did not give a survey to us individually, to our district. Um, some of us were given a survey by them to test this out, um. Please fill this out as an administrator and then we were able to see samples of what the. The teachers' questions were as well, even though I did not fill it out as a teacher. But it was really interesting, it was a very different survey than I have ever taken, but um. Again, I think the deadline for taking it was maybe mid-November, early November, and then they're taking all that data, boiling it down. Um, Mandy, if you'd like to explain a little bit too.
I think in the questions that they asked us, they were more general, like for them to have a better understanding of what our teachers were experiencing. Response to how they have a feeling and in just in that all. And that their next step is, and they will also work with other districts to gain that same information. Their goal is to be able to out. Some good ideas on how to respond at the district through the way our teachers and staff are feeling. Um. Due to the slow morale. So they were asking a lot of questions to just to gain that knowledge and background. And um, I'm looking forward to the next step on what they're able to provide us and some guidance and. How we can use differently and and work with um. Staff that we have in our district in response to the pandemic and low staff morale.
Yeah, thank you.
Senator Johnson.
I was just curious as we uh, like, going back over this, the uh. For uh, six one indicator two. The percent of positive staff responses to the staff climate service will 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 increase each year, um. Yeah, what is that? You know, I I guess. What does it, what what does percentage change truly indicate? And 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 as we, as we talk about morale, I I guess, do does percentage change in staff climate? At the aggregate? Does it, what's that impact on individual experience of 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 staff? Each building has its own climate, uh, uh, and and impact, uh, that's developed by 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 its leadership. Things could be going really well, a couple of buildings, which moves the aggregate and the percentages. To whatever this increase or desirable piece is, so I, I I I guess for me, as I. I've been going back and looking at this, you know, something that will have to be reexamined, I'm I'm, the percentage change doesn't really do anything for, like, for me. I I, uh, unless we can equate that percentage change to. To 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 elements that uh, really are tangible to. Our individual teachers that 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 they speak to and and I guess that's. I I I thought that was interesting, so that was, that's one comment, uh, and it it doesn't necessarily require a response, but I. I I, for me, looking forward, if I am a part of this process uh, next year and evaluate it. I'm not really sure unless we can go a little bit further in terms of what does, what does a percentage change mean? Or is that, because thematically, do we have certain areas where majority of teachers who responded to that particular theme? That's what's improved about the climate, but just a general percentage change, I don't think it really, really moves the needle. And I guess the other one is, uh, and it's OE six two, indicator, uh, indicator four. And. So i- i- is this speaking to? Uh, applicants who will apply for positions? Individuals who. Uh, uh, are 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 hired, uh, because the challenge and as someone that sits uh, on uh. Uh, some university initiatives that 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 also want to promote and increase, increase. We have to kind of concern ourselves with kind of the population that uh, that we have. And I think this idea that we will just uh, uh, bring in a a a. A large significant amount of candidates of color and that they will be willing to stay, so. I guess for me, another comment or point that I would like to see, once again, I'm not sure indicator two, indicator four, excuse me. Will probably be in not compliant over multiple years, but what are efforts that are being made there? But what I also see that was missing and and that was something that we that we missed moving forward, there's not an element of retention. And that's where I think for for uh, teachers and staff of color. If we're wanting to potentially be be reflective is we start with the individuals of color who. Have decided to potentially make this. Uh, uh, a a place where they're wanting to, uh, wanting to work and. And so I would like to see an an indicator moving forward that really speaks to that. That the uh, retention, uh, retention of staff in general, but uh, efforts made uh, of retention of of staff color and. And I will just say, over the last year, uh, the uh, the few meetings that I have been able to have with a a a. Bilingual education assistance for me. We, there's a lot of work that we, that 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 we need to do and there's also a lot of opportunity. Of utilizing expertise even in those particular ranks, that we could figure out ways to support them to getting. Uh. Non-alternative teaching licenses. Potentially improve or increase our particular numbers, that would be an avenue that we uh, would do, so I I I guess. Those are two comments for me as I, as I looked at this, but I know moving forward. Uh, indicator four, whatever it is presented to to the school by as a whole. As, you know, if I'm, if I'm part of that evaluation, indicator four for me is, yeah, I'm just not really sure, um. We'll be non-compliant there for a while and that's fine, but could, hopefully you would be able to speak to efforts that were made. To uh, potentially kind of move that needle some.
I think I can respond and I don't think I'll need anybody else's help in the audience. Um, I'll do my best. Uh, but six one, your comments about six one don't surprise me at all because that's how you discussed. R two. And I I totally understand about that, unless there's something else to measure it with, where, okay, you've got this. You know, when you break it down by, let's say, a school and if you have. Um, a positive climate that's measured, whether it's broken down by morale, um. With with colleague relationships, with administrative relationships, what have you. If that's maybe matched to, let's say, achievement data, then we got something to talk about, you're right. Um. This we just put down as baseline data because it was the first time that we had shown this, correct? Or we had, we had given this report and ultimately, we want to keep improving that every year. Now, if there are seventeen questions. To have all seventeen improve every year might be difficult, but I think if we were to maybe break those down or examine those questions as. How many of these are maybe collegial, how many of those are supervisory, how many of those are? You know, maybe breaking them down, that can help us. And moving to your indicator four, um. At first, I think you asked or you made the comment about not really sure if this is to new employees or the employees we have. And I I somewhat alert you to go back to six two in the blue, recruit, select, retain and promote. And so that's where I think it's both, we want to recruit, for example, I'm inviting myself to Metro State University in St. Paul to say, hey. Let me talk to you about, you know, with with their student teaching candidates, they're close to fifty percent practicum students of color. Come on and, you know, learn a little bit about Eau Claire, Wisconsin. Um, so that would, that would be the new. The select, and that's where with Kay's processes in indicator three, what about our internal processes where? People do, are able to check the box if you're a person of a different race, yep, absolutely, we we do look at that, obviously. Um, the retain are affinity groups for staff of color is important, um. You know, so they they can discuss some of the same, you know, difficulties they've had or maybe some successes in in working together to be able to stay. But also to promote those staff as well. I agree with you where, and and that's one of the reasons why we said not compliant. Is because don't quite know where that's going to go, we need to collect a lot of data, analyze it. In my past life, and this was part of a strategic plan. We went, and we we tried to make, I think, you know, we had forty percent students of color in my former district. We can't get there overnight and we probably weren't going to get there in. I mean, even ten years, just because the the teaching candidate pool, we we really made an effort with teaching candidates as opposed to. To hourly staff, teachers and administrators, because of the research that you see when there's a. When there's a teacher who looks like you and you're a student of color, what's going to happen to your achievement? You know, that's pretty powerful. Um, but ultimately. That's the, that's what we really want to discover here with. And and also E A B is another part of this process, um, to recruit, to retain, um, to s- to select. And then to promote. With not just the staff that we would like to come here, but. But like I said before, if we look and we we look at our present, you know, twenty-five percent in Eau Claire, students of color, we can't get there overnight, but what about? The next hiring stage that we do this next year in the summer? Or what about at the midterm, at the semester, when we have positions open? What types of candidates will we draw? And that's what we need to look at, the small steps, to then hopefully make bigger increases of that later.
Well, Commissioner Zer and Representative Logan.
Um, so, bear with me. Just, it's just coming to me, but the, I think the thing that, and maybe this can speak broadly. To the governance model, but specifically here. It seems to be popping up in my brain a lot of how? Do we? Add narrative to these indicators? In such a way that we hear the stories of the work that is being. Done, because what what we're hearing in the discussion. Is some of the, uh, some of the ideas and the things that are happening and the proactive measures and how? How will we, how will, will we be able, other than taking furious amounts of notes and going back and reviewing in a year where we've been, how will we? Monitor the success of those. Stories and those pieces and those. And 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 the things that you're talking about right now, how will we? Know that tho- that those are something we want to follow back up on, you know what I mean? So like the narrative com- there's, there are stories here. And stories are much easier for us to, I think for us to relay when we talk to the community and for the community to understand. Well, here's something they're actually physically doing, not just data on a sheet that we see maybe in executive content, but the rest of the. Folks don't see, how do we hear? The the, especially when it comes to personnel, the human story of what we are doing and have a conversation about that and then somehow. Want to find it up to monitor it and I don't know. Does that, am I making sense in that? Does that make sense? And I, I don't know how to do that, but it seems here. With some of these, and and I think too, when we talk about some of the. The day to day, you know, things that we're doing with our students, it's it's the same, when when we're making these big. Pushes and growth. Efforts. How do we monitor that? How do we capture that and monitor it? Because. It's not just a survey, there's, there's more going on, you're seeing so much great stuff, but it's really hard to know in a year how we're going to come back to that. Follow up on it.
I think because it's not compliant, it's not generated yet, so therefore I have not. I have not placed. Specific enough evidence to share that, but I know you're miss, I know we're missing and I know you desire that piece, like we can talk about certain stories. Some success stories, you know, and how do you reflect that in here? But then on the flip side, you know, there is that. Attention to confidentiality maybe, um, but I do think. You know, this is our first kick at it, um, with with quite a bit of evidence, but I think. I think by making that evidence more specific and maybe winnowing it down, um. Or maybe highlighting certain components to this, like I'm taking notes on and maybe that's what I do in a memo to you before. Future monitoring reports to say, here are some of the things and here's the story, or here is a story behind it at. This grade level or this school, I don't know, but it's probably hard to. Describe because we haven't placed the evidence there yet.
Sure, yeah, and it might, it might, just as a follow-up, it might be a bigger conversation for us to have as a board, I just thought. Here, here, I feel. I I feel it missing perhaps more and you're right, it could just be an insufficient, like insufficient evidence in there. At the, at the current. You know, glance at it, um. I just think it, it could go a long way to helping us in some of these. Some of these more difficult goals or these, you know, real growth parts, if we, if we kind of all have the same story of what we're working towards and this. And the. The same language around what we're doing and I think it's really tough for us to get that from a, you know. Simple survey is is more. Yeah. Anyway. Very scattered thoughts, but thank you.
Representative Logan.
Comments, the first was when doing the yearly surveys. To me, it appears more helpful not only to ask teachers how they feel about current culture, but also how they feel about. How valued they feel, because what culture is something that changes rather slowly. They're feeling valued and indicate how culture will change in the future and can be used as more short-term feedback for. How well current policies are doing and in addition to that, it would be very helpful to segregate how valued they feel by. The downtown administration, their school administration, colleagues, students and the community. And as a mental indicator for next time. Maybe also focus on, from a teacher's perspective, how current initiatives are going, because we can do all the surveys we want. But if we aren't getting their feedback on what they'd like to be improved, we're really just guessing and may not be making much informed decisions that we could.
Senator Johnson.
Yeah, I I keep bringing this up and kind of finding where the 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 best place, but uh. Maybe if we were to on OE si- uh, OE six eleven, uh, there, if. If at all possible, uh, I keep asking about this and it keeps coming up in terms of we. We're we're experiencing a very low morale of educators, we are experiencing, um. Uh, high, uh, high resignation rates across e- 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 education and so. Uh, I I would like to see, i- i- is it possible moving forward that we try to address, and I'm not sure do we have something in place already, but. But care for the caregiver program, if if you can imagine, uh, the the extent of. You know, uh, our, our educators and they're experiencing, uh, the. Dramatic impact that pa- uh, the pandemic has had on their particular students, but also a lot of. Oh, I I don't know the percentage, but I'm pretty sure there's a good, good percentage of our teachers are also, uh, parents themselves. And, uh, handling the nuances of their own children's. their own children's experience during this particular pandemic where I, I, I think we should have that here and and I, I don't know, at OE six eleven, you know, I, I think moving forward, just something as it relates to what are we doing in terms of our efforts to provide, uh, uh, you know, models there, and there's a couple of national models out there in terms of care for the caregiver program, uh, resources, uh, uh, that, that, that are available. And I think, you know, commissioners are, shared, uh, one of those resources from a local entity of how they're, how, how they're addressing that. But I would like to, you know, moving forward to have something there that, cause I, I think that would in terms of, of moving the needle and, uh, in, in, in percentages as it relates to like a, a climate survey, knowing that there's the existence of a care for the caregiver program when you, you're at your wits' end as a professional. What, what's, what's available to you in terms of to kinda, uh, uh, come back, uh, and 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 be re-energized, cause I, I, I really think that's the, uh, uh, individuals are o- are overwhelmed or overworked, underpaid, whatever, you know, whatever the, uh, and who, who can they go to? And it, it may be something as simple as, you know, colleagues who are training to de-escalate anxiety, uh, uh, bring back individuals from, uh, 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 bouts of depression. And, you know, can we put some of that in place? And for me, uh, ma- maybe OE eleven, what I, what I would like to see is somewhere in this particular piece that we, we address, I'll begin to this process of having like a care for the caregiver program. Uh, I think that would also, uh, make us unique in terms of drawing in, you know, new educators that you know, this is a priority in this particular, uh, particular school, so, yeah.
Senator Berg.
Uh, really similar to what was just said, um, I, I noticed a lot of, um, emphasis on trying to like grow the population of teachers and grow like the diversity of teachers, but so far we haven't had like a ton of support for teachers that we already have, and I would love to see more of that. And I would also think like, uh, a more definitive way to monitor how well programs like caring for the caregiver are working, like how, how well they are, how effective they are for actually like providing something meaningful to an educator. Um, I, do you guys have any thoughts on that?
I guess part of it would be our meetings, for example, I meet with the association president quite often, as does the, uh, as does executive director Marks. We also reach out to the, um, to the leadership team and we have monthly meetings with them where we do learn about concerns for them. Um, we also with Kim Kohler supervising principals, we also learn about what teachers are sharing with their principals and then principals share that with us as well. Um, I mean, not to, not necessarily to broadcast, but there had been some efforts in the month of November, pretty significant ones about COVID leave and and probably three to four items that we felt we responded to teachers' needs, um, and their desires over the past probably six to eight weeks. And and part of that, you know, it doesn't happen overnight real quickly, but but I think first of all, listening and then understanding, um, you know, when we're out in the schools and we experience that, but also when we hear from principals, not just once, not just twice, but, but to understand that. And I guess in terms of the monitoring of certain types of programs, I would um, elicit any type of, or solicit any type of feedback from any of the executive directors to any, um, any other meetings that you have with staff regarding this or conversations with groups of staff, hourly staff, teaching staff, doesn't matter, even our administrators. I mean, I got, we got people out here that that need that assistance too. And it's, it's difficult for all of us in education, as it is for board members. Um, but we do, we have to take care of the, the folks that are in front of our students. Anything for anyone else to add?
I'll just add that I know that, um, for principals, this is heavy on their mind and they're constantly problem-solving how to support staff. Um, and and part of it is just the uniqueness of this year. Um, and part of it is that the uniqueness of this year has actually been almost two years now. Um, so I know principals are, are working, um, to, um, support staff and adhere staff and are constantly in problem-solving mode, um, you know, just to to kind of address some of the concerns that you've expressed tonight.
Representative Logan.
As a potential method for making teachers feel more supported, I know specifically at North, there are a number of positions that are hopefully going to be filled for next year, but likely a couple of them will not. Is it possible for funds to be reapportioned if positions are not filled? In whole or in part, two of the faculty within the department can have to pick up the load? Make them feel somewhat compensated for the increase in work they have to do as a result of positions not being filled?
Those would be, those would be considered overloads. Um, and I see we've got Principal Oldenburg with us to see, it's typically at the, at the secondary level. If we cannot find a, we cannot find a position, for example, technology education or certain types of math or science courses that are very difficult to fill, um, and like consumer science as well, uh, we do lean on the people who, and those are called overloads. And if we're willing to do that or we're able to do that, the thing I appreciate most about our district is that very seldom, our, very seldom are classes clashed. I see that in other districts and, and I, I think they experience that more often, also with course selections. If I'm not mistaken, Reed and Aslan, do you, when you, when you sign up for courses at the high school, how many alternates do you have? Maybe two? I think we're very fortunate here and that's a credit to the administration, um, and to the teaching staff is that they deliver for you. There are many districts where it's anywhere from six to eight alternates, so you get your first or your second alternate choice and they wanna provide that for you. And that's a, that's somewhat of a necessary evil if you, if you're a teacher in one of those types of, I guess, courses where when the principal, and and that's true to form, our, our staff are very dedicated here. When the principal asks, did you take an overload? These kids really need this class. We don't wanna crash it, they do it. And it's just, um, but this is a, this is a phenomenon across the state and across the nation where there are certain hard-to-fill positions. Um, but you're right, Reed, they do get compensated if there is that overload for that extra work.
Does that overload apply to teachers who aren't picking up more hours, but teachers who simply have five more students in their class?
No.
Would that be a possibility?
Um, I don't believe so. I don't know if that's ever been the case in Eau Claire, if you have X amount of students above and beyond. Now, if it's temporary for substituting with a collapsed classroom, so to speak, that's a possibility. I, I'm looking at the executive director of H R and I don't wanna say anything incorrect, but.
Historically, overloads have not been based upon students, um, student enrollment in the class, but they've been based upon sections and how many sections this, uh, teacher teaches. So that's, I asked Dr. Bargain, that's the way that it's been done for years. Um, when we went into COVID, had the companies of construction models, a lot of things changed last year. Uh, so, it was a bit unique and some differences that occurred last year. Um, but historically speaking, no, that's not the way that that happens.
I think at this time, I should probably remind the board and all of our meeting participants that our job is not to recommend how the district complies with our operational expectations, but in fact, to simply monitor whether or not they are in compliance. Uh, those ideas and and suggestions, I think, are very appropriate to be sent on to Superintendent Johnson for his consideration with the rest of the staff. But, uh, the time that we're spending here tonight needs to be focused on whether or not the district is in compliance or whether or not we agree with the assessment of the district. Uh, so are there further comments and questions on, uh, OE six? Uh, seeing, and I'll just end by saying, uh, even though we, you know, accept and approve, uh, these reports tonight, and as we go through, the expectation is of course always that in areas where the district is not compliant or compliant with exceptions, that when we see this again, the district will be more in compliance. Especially with the operational expectations, it's either a, it's done or it's not. And the expectation from the board, of course, is to have it done. We know that there are things that we have to work on and that's Superintendent Johnson, I think you said, you know, at, uh, your previous district, you maybe couldn't hit that mark within ten years of increasing the diversity. So we understand that perhaps there are, but I just wanna make it clear as we go forward that the board, even when we say we accept and approve this report, our expectation is that we will be making progress in future years. Uh, so at this time, I would hear a motion to accept and approve OE six.
Motion to accept and approve OE six.
And a second. Is there a discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the acceptance and approval of OE six, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. The motion carries. We have one more, uh, monitoring report tonight, that is the first draft of OE eleven, financial administration. Once again, Superintendent Johnson.
Thank you, uh, with this first draft, um, when Abby and I had worked on this, uh, first of all, we just felt that because there were so many pieces of this that were very interrelated, we just thought we would put the interpretation and, uh, many key phrases uh, and definitions at the front and then just like a couple of other districts have done, especially with an OE ten and eleven. Um, just to put all those or the interpretation at the front and just focus on the indicators going forward. Um, but anyway, I, I guess, you know, as a multimillion dollar organization funded by the, by public dollars, you know, we need to utilize industry standard economic principles and practices. Um, and then it shares what that's, what that's for in these transactions, like we'll discuss S R three in, in the very near future. Um, need to be transparent and supported through checks and balances. Um, and then it, it shows the, um, the impact of external audits for us and what it does to assist us. So there's a glossary of terms there, probably anywhere from, uh, fifteen to twenty. Uh, just overall, you know, superintendent will ensure that the board of that is well informed of the district's financial health. We had one question from a board member and I, I think it's, it's very legitimate. I think indicators one and two could be mixed together. The district publishes, well, I think that could be, um, an item in the glossary, publish, well, what does that mean? A statement, report posted for download on the district website, we could really mix that into indicator one. Um, for eleven, one, assuring that payroll and legitimate debts of the district are promptly paid when due, very simple indicator, uh, there, or actually four simple indicators there. Um, for OE eleven point two and eleven point three, that discusses the bidding processes. And Abby obviously can, can detail why, you know, why a certain amount, um, and what that process looks like. Um, fourteen talks a bit about the general fund and what, uh, auditors share what our district reserve should be for that, for the fund balance. Um, for OE eleven point five, managing student activity funds under the guidance provided by D P I and how the auditors impact that. Eleven six, uh, any debt obligations before the board of, at, for review and approval, um, and their approval processes. And then eleven seven, uh, developing guidelines and admin rules ensuring debt management. Uh, number eight or eleven eight are procurement functions. Um, Abby and I, I think we talked about that with, uh, a procurement guide or that manual. That's going, you're gonna be able to see that, I think, in evidence in the future. Uh, collection of, uh, any funds due to the district from any source, making reasonable efforts. Very consistent across all five, six districts that we examine with this one. And then for eleven, uh, eleven ten, uh, talks about the auditing process and three indicators there. So I guess that's, that's my interpretation in, in sharing some of the, the indicators in, in language. Um, be more than happy to take comments and questions from the board.
Commissioner Zer.
So I'm just asking a question about the overarching statement. At the end there where it says, and ensure the management of financial resources continues to reflect the district's commitment to racial, social, and where in the indicators within the, the sub-policies here, will we see that, will, will we monitor that? We do not monitor that. Have it in that statement, but we don't, we don't actually monitor it, and is that correct? That we wouldn't see those in the sub-points or is that just kind of like the general goal and then we don't have? I guess a question for the rest of us, like actual indicators that we're gonna be looking at with that?
Oh, I would, I guess how I would interpret that is to share in evidence how certain funds are utilized. And I think we could probably see some of this, Abby, correct me if I'm wrong, in, um, budgeting processes and administration for OE ten. Um, since this is financial administration, I think we may see some of that as well, but that's just a, that's just a comment.
Commissioner Clemens has often said, where we put our money reflects our values. And so I would expect in some of, you know, if we look at how the funds are used, that would be one spot. But perhaps we need to think about how the board needs to see that to ensure that that part is being there. Commissioner Lyons.
Uh, Superintendent Johnson mentioned earlier tonight that OE four and five could be flipped. And I think the same thing about OE ten and OE eleven. And when I read through OE eleven, without having stepped back and looked at OE ten, I made the recommendation that we should add a financial indicator to that, that first statement that ensures that the board of education be informed of the district's financial. Um, I changed my mind on that, because when I think about OE eleven, I think that OE eleven is intended to be very nuts and bolts. That it's the, it's the debt service, it's payroll, it's procurement. It's very nuts and bold, where OE ten is about budgeting and financial planning. And so the comment that I made or the question that I had was that in this indicator, um, it's the, the, the district's financial, truly gives us a snapshot of prior year. And that what I think would be helpful for the board is some sort of indicator that gives us a forward-looking, uh, financial document, because we're, we're making decisions on capital, on personnel, on fringe, that are very forward-looking. And how that fits into the next year's is, is really about OE ten, not about OE eleven. And so my comment is maybe in the, um, the rewriting exercise, I kinda like to discuss whether or not the superintendent ensuring that we're well-informed of the district's financial health even belongs there. Because if OE eleven is about the nuts and bolts and we're thinking about OE ten being financial and budget, financial planning and budget, the idea of keeping us informed of the long-term financial health would really be something that would be us understanding budget and how the financial planning, um, incorporates that, not about the administration of the money. So that's, that's my comment and in the, the question, um, about adding an indicator, I don't, I don't know if that would be necessary. So that's, that's my comment and, and the, the question, um, about adding an indicator, I don't, I don't really think is necessary. And I think the rest of it really looks good and I would make a motion to approve it.
Well, this is a first draft, so we don't have to worry about that tonight. We don't have any of the evidence to say whether it's actually happening. I think Abby in the back probably could provide that and will in about a month or so when it comes back up. But, uh, yeah, tonight's just a first draft. So if there's things that we're looking for or, you know, things that we thought we might be looking for, but now maybe fit elsewhere, that's, this is our chance. Uh, we just give that feedback in preparation. Uh, I imagine it must be in January, but I, Dr. Johnson, you usually have the calendar there. Can you?
January third.
The first meeting in January. Thank you. Seeing no other comments or questions, we will have this back in front of us with the full report on January third. Or so maybe you could just make a specific note of Commissioner Lyons, you know, idea for potentially looking at, at that at the policy writing work session. I believe that's coming up for February. Um, right. Right. That, at this time then, it, we move on to our for debrief for the evening. I did not live up to my word and remind Commissioner Lyons that he was going to be the one leading the, for debrief tonight, but now I'm giving you a three seconds to, uh, lift off reminders. So thank you. And I'll turn it over to you, Commissioner Lyons, to lead us in our, uh,
Okay. Um, as in the past, we, uh, we've talked a little bit about, um, things that have gone well and things that, um, might be improved. And, uh, Commissioner, sir, I, I will call on you to, uh, those words of wisdom.
Ah, words of wisdom. Um, I don't, it, it's starting to feel more like we are, I know you guys said this last meeting and I didn't feel it last meeting, but I feel it now that I feel like we're, we're operating well and we're asking the right questions. Like I feel like we're kind of getting the style of what we're doing, like governance model. Um, on the flip side of that coin. Um, and I mean, I, at least I felt this week, I felt this week much more like I understood or beginning to understand how, how we're actually going to monitor the long-term health of the district utilizing this governance model. And it, it's coming into focus as we, we need to start asking for the things that we need to ensure that, you know, if, if we aren't here, we're not here, that we have set up a structure and a system that future boards can have a long-term story of the help of, of what they're looking at. So I think that work continues and we will see the administration for being responsive and helpful with that process. I think on the flip side is it of that thing is, um, the reminder to stay out of the weed business. Like I can't, it's so funny how we just went there and we're just talking about, you know, like I wanted to talk about some ideas I had. Too bad. So, you know, I think there's just that, the, the funny, like we can kind of go down that path. Um, so interesting. It's, it's interesting, man.
I'll, I'll speak next then, go this way. Um, I agree with everything you said, Commissioner Zer. Um, I really appreciate Superintendent Johnson, the response to the questions and knowing other board members' questions. I think that's really helpful. Um, I think that we're, we're getting, uh, our arms around coherent governance and I too also, when I read through the documents, start to find things that I have questions about and I have to remind myself that about my. So I'm, I'm. Commissioner Johnson?
Um, well, I guess, uh, that, that the meeting finished earlier. That's the positive piece, I guess, where, uh, uh, for me, what, what, what unfortunately though, what I, what I've realized, so maybe, uh, moving forward where we've probably uh, gone about this a little bit, uh, the wrong way in terms of, uh, what we've decided to monitor and, uh, the items, I, 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 I would anticipate moving forward if I, if I am a part of the school board moving forward, I, what I, what I'm going to advocate for is that we do not, uh, create additional work and energy for those in first, specifically for, for, for teachers. And what I would like to, uh, would like to see is in alignment with what's required, uh, from us, uh, uh, as a school to ship, what's the requirement from a federal level? What's the requirement from the state level? And then what's unique to the interest of the particular school board and what I, what, what I, what I would be most curious if we can capture the data points that are already required of us from the federal and, and, and state level, that those make up potential monitoring reports that we've seen. And then are there some unique pieces that speak specifically to, to our particular district moving forward? Because that data already has to be, uh, collected by law. And so we, we already have it. That work's already done. And so I, I guess as I'm moving forward, uh, and looking at, uh, uh, indicators and reports that will be coming forward to try to ensure at least for, uh, the, the, the teachers and, uh, building administrators that, uh, we are not increasing, uh, 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 workload. And, and I, I think at a point where, uh, as one of the, uh, executive members, uh, mentioned earlier, we're at a point where we're, we're two years into what's been, uh, uh, a very difficult time. That whole idea of doing more, not necessarily see, uh, not necessarily being compensated, not necessarily adequately handling the, I think that has to be, has to be addressed. And I think for me moving forward, that will be, I guess, that the, the, the stance I will take as information comes through. Thank you.
Uh, President Nordean.
One of the things that I thought went really well tonight was, I, I think sort of touched on over here already, but the evolution of realizing what it is that we need. There were a couple of suggestions for indicators that we need going forward. You know, pieces of data that will help us as board members feel more confident in saying we agree with where the, the district is compliant with this particular thing. And that's, that's how these, these policies I think are supposed to work is by or evolving them and realizing we need to know this bit of information so that we can feel confident in saying, Lieutenant Johnson, you've done your job. The district is succeeding. And, and hearing that come out and start to evolve and say, okay, for next time, I need to see this piece or I need to see it broken down more because just the overall percentage isn't as helpful as I'd like, but if I knew at a school level or on a theme level that that would be helpful. So I need a little bit more for next time. I think, I think that's incredibly positive in how we look at and monitor the success of this district. And I think that is at the same time, as you said, on the flip side, I think it's the same coin. It's that's our challenge is to continue to make ourselves better as a board. And that goes for whoever sits in these seats in the future has to be a constant development and a challenge to each of us to say, what do I need to know? How do I get the information? How do I ask that question ahead of time? So I think that's exciting to me to hear some of these suggestions, especially from my colleagues to, to, to see you dealing with it and helping me to think about, oh, that's a really great way to think about it. That would actually help me a lot too. Um, but then seeing that challenge for myself, you know, how do I step up and, and do my part in moving us forward in that same way? So.
Uh, Commissioner Clements will.
Thank you. Um, I, looking over the reports, you know, I think we're moving in a direction where we're connecting data with the uh, expected outcomes. Um, and I think for, for me, one challenge I've had is just understanding what is the district collecting right now? Um, similar to, uh, Commissioner Johnson's point about we, we should be seeking to minimize new work to that, to the district to ensure that we're monitoring these things. But, uh, you know, as, as an outside person outside the education ecosystem, I largely don't know what's already being, um, what our options are in terms of existing things we're measuring. Um, and so I think so far it's, we're, we're seeing some improvements here and I like the direction, uh, that this is going.
Thank you. And finally, Commissioner Beacon.
Um, I, I don't have much more to add. I, I agree that so I, I guess I thought this, this particular meeting would be a bit more straightforward than it was if we did get into some micro spots and didn't necessarily catch ourselves doing. Um, what I thought was positive about it is that I think that certainly from, but I think there are ideas about how do we, new ideas that are coming forward. Uh, how do we ensure continuity? So whoever's sitting in these seats at, you know, next year and years after that, how do we always, you know, how do we know what's been done before? I think some new ideas are coming forward or even just get questions we have. Uh, how do we keep that information moving forward?
Again, the part we improve the student. I think we're still in that process. We have another meeting set for next week for continued orientation of our student members.
At this time, I would hear a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Adjourn.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board.